I'd like to welcome our viewers to this community forum show featuring a discussion on the Town of Stoughton Planning Board. Whatever time of the day is, I wish greetings to our viewers. My name is Joe Scardino. I'm going to be your host for this hour-long presentation on update of the Planning Board activities for the Town of Stoughton. I am pleased to have with me today our advisor and member of the professional staff of the Town of Stoughton, our town planner, Noreen O'Toole. Noreen, welcome to the community forum show.
Thank you very much, Joe. I'm pleased to be with you today.
And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that our board is lucky. We have the consulting services of quite a few professionals from the Town Hall professional staff. Noreen is one of them. We have town engineer Mark Tisdale, Assistant Town Engineer Craig Horstfeld, also Associate Engineer Mike Nolan, fantastic office manager in Kristen. And that's why we're able to do some of the projects that you're going to be seeing and hearing about on today's show. Just a little background, I'm the current Chair of the Planning Board. It consists of five members. My other colleagues are Mr. Bill Angeles, who's Vice Chair, Ms. Lynn Jordan, Mr. Mike Samarco, and Mr. Dan Kelly. And these people represent various backgrounds and bring those backgrounds to the table in terms of analyzing and commenting and reviewing the projects that come before the Planning Board. The Planning Board is a, has two major tasks. And that is largely for site plan approval. And within the site plan approval, we also are the Special Permit and Granting Authority. And some of the projects we'll be discussing have also been projects where the, where special permits are granted. The Special Permit Granting Authority is laid out in the bylaw. There is about a dozen different criteria that we use. And the reason why it's different than a, than site plan approval because it's much more pervasive in terms of the privileges that allows the applicant. And therefore, the law requires us to go through a much more rigorous analysis as a board in order to come to our decisions. So for example, economic development, impact on the butters, impact on the infrastructure of the town, aesthetics. So all of these factors and many, many more utilized in terms of a special permit. And some of the types of things subject to special permit are the number and square footage of signs, the presence or absence of a drive-through, and certain uses. For example, mixed-use development in the square, where you have residential on the upper floors and commercial on the first floor. The Planning Board had a very busy year. I'm going to let Noreen talk about the, the number of projects and the number of decisions that we rendered for our last season. Noreen?
Thanks very much, Joe. And what I won't be talking about is projects right now that are already out there, such as, you know, the Burger King and some of those projects. I'm going to talk about the most current projects that we're in the process of. And right now, as, as everyone, you know, has been following, on Park Street is we have the, the Stoughton Public Library. And that, that has been moving forward. As people notice, you know, driving up Park Street is, you know, we're really working, taking off one layer and doing a lot of construction on that. And that, that project is really moving forward. And people know that our library, of course, has moved to Washington Street. And that has been a successful move. But there's been a lot going on as far as the logistics and the planning of the library and coming before the Planning Board. And just so the public knows, you know, these projects have a lot of in-house meetings, which the Chairman of the Planning Board, Joe, has been very involved in. You know, we're meeting with the engineers and the architects and the attorneys. And we try to do that on the very large projects, but sometimes it's required on the smaller projects too. So that is probably one of our number-one projects. And that dovetails into the, the Stoughton High School.
Now, Ms. O'Toole, I just want to stop and ask you, in addition to enhancing the projects, what's the other benefit of having those in-house meetings before the, before a project is vetted in the public?
I think that the advantage of our in-house meetings is we, we gather all the professionals, you know, the engineers, if we need conservation or whatever the departments we may need, Board of Health. You know, we know that we don't want this project to continue through the Planning Board for maybe, you know, more than the meetings that actually is required. You know, it doesn't have to go on and on. And I think sometimes what the public thinks is, I think the public thinks that sometimes, you know, the town takes a long time to expedite a project, when in fact, we're probably one of the towns in the Commonwealth that really moves forward with projects. Other towns' projects can go on for years. And that in-house vetting of that information, that helps us because what happens is when it gets to the Planning Board level, a lot of the major issues have already been resolved. So by the time you have the public hearing and it goes to the Planning Board, you know, we'll have the residents there. And I think that we're more equipped to answer questions too, when we have the public there. And I think that it saves time and we can move our development process along, like expedited permitting, which is a process that the state encourages. And that process is from when the developer submits the project, that's 180-day process. And sometimes we're under that 180 days because we've done so much work in-house. And it's not just one meeting in-house, it can be three or four meetings in-house, as you know. And I think that the public doesn't realize all the staff and the volunteers that are on boards, the behind-the-scenes meetings that are conducted, which takes, you know, out of their schedule as volunteers. And of course, the professionals, we're there to, you know, to provide our expertise. And I think that what we're doing is we're developing some very good projects for the town, very sophisticated, very modern projects. And, you know, you can probably address later on in the show, just the idea of electric charging stations. You know, towns are not doing that, and we're doing that in our projects.
So would you say that the, the format that we've used, in your experience, having worked in other towns and other situations, actually results in a better project that comes to fruition a lot faster? Was that a fair?
It results in, you're absolutely right, in a much better project because the time is put in beforehand. And if the engineering needs to be changed or we need to request a traffic study, then all of that is done, vetted at that stage. Then when it comes to the Planning Board, there's discussion, but there's discussion moving forward on the project. There's not as many revisions to the project because having experience in other towns, projects would be continued and continued on. And I think the difference also is, in a lot of the smaller towns, they don't have engineers on staff. And this town is very lucky to have engineers on staff and have professionals there and to do those reviews, those technical reviews. Because in other towns, when you use a consultant, the process is very slow because there aren't people, you know, such as yourself, from Planning Board coming in to meet with the actual applicant because we don't have the professionals on staff. So the Town of Stoughton is very sophisticated and its professionals in, you know, how the engineers are used with the Planning Board in that technical review process. I've worked in a lot of towns and this really is the very best. And I hope that people realize that, that it is really top-shelf here as far as your technical reviews, your engineers, your planning and your Planning Board and what's happening out there. Really is.
Now, you've worked in other towns where, as you mentioned, that the consulting work was farmed out to outside consultants.
Yes.
In your professional view, do you, are you convinced that having a product generated from in-house staff creates a higher level of accountability to the town than perhaps you might get from a outside consultant?
I think for Planning Board purposes, because we have very talented engineers that can review drainage, can, you know, review the site plan, the sewer, the water, whatever. I think in some cases, when we, you know, use consultants for traffic and things of that nature, because we don't have a traffic engineer on staff, I think that that is when we need to use outside. But the rest of the project, yeah, we're all accountable to that because that's being reviewed in-house. And when we need to get something reviewed outside, you know, we know that we do, you know, we have a track consultant that, you know, we use, that we need to use that service. But yes, people, I think, are more accountable to answer that question. Absolutely. And, you know, I can move forward on to, just because I think people like to know what the projects are.
Please do.
I know that when I did, did a presentation six months ago at the Senior Center, I went through all the projects and they liked that. And they were able to ask questions. And they see things, but they don't know what's happening out there. The third project is Reebok Drive and Page Street. And that is adjacent to the BJ's. And with that project is, that is a self-storage unit project that came before the Planning Board. And they're building a very modern and sophisticated-looking building, you know, for a self-storage unit. And that is in an area that's kind of tucked in there with BJ's. And I think the use is very compatible for where it is as far as land use. The next project is...
Actually, before we leave that project, I think that people, our viewers, might be interested in hearing that, my understanding is that that particular parcel was the last parcel developable in the original Redevelopment Authority project up there on Technology Drive, which I believe started with the Reebok building, the headquarters itself. And so I think that finally, after 30-plus years, that project is completed. And that just shows the public how long it takes for a major industrial development like that to take place with physical and fiscal challenges.
It, it really does. And the, the other challenge is too, sometimes, are the land itself, the topography, and the money that has to be put into the development of. But that has, and that statistic you just gave me, I didn't even know it had been that long. So I know that people do become impatient, and later on, we might talk a bit about the downtown. People become impatient because they've been watching something and watching something for years. But that, that is a good goal, that, you know, now that the industrial area, you know, has been, been developed and a new use there and a new tax, new tax use, new tax base. Just as, you know, beside, you know, smack where we are right now is the new hotel, Hampton Inn Suites. That's something that, you know, 100 units, and that is our number-one tax generator, hotel. And that's why the Planning Board, we work on zoning so hard to put these hotels in areas. And even thinking about putting hotels in an industrial area because it's a perfect use. If you go around towns, not just in Massachusetts, in any state, Maryland, Virginia, you will see, I've actually stayed in hotels in industrial parks, and it works very well. So we're also trying to get uses that will, you know, alleviate, you know, the tax base for the residents too. And, you know, make their taxes, you know, a little more affordable because there are so many things coming up right now.
Now, I think it would be interesting for the public to know that why you select industrial zones, isn't that because it's less invasive for residential being in near-residential neighborhoods?
Mm-hmm. Yes. And because hotels, there's a lot of activity, you know, the, the stop-and-start activity and people coming in and out. And it's, and when people, you know, when people are visiting here, going out of state, what the industrial parks offer, I think, is it's quiet because people usually have a car and they're going somewhere. And some actually, industrial areas have delis too. They've allowed delis to come in. So people that are staying with the hotels, if they don't want to eat that particular food, they can get a sandwich at a deli. So I've, I've stayed at some really nice hotels in industrial areas. So I think that that could work for us too, in some of our industrial parks.
And I would think that since some of the residents at these hotels have commercial vehicles, I think it's probably another reason, would you say, that...
Oh, absolutely.
They're in industrial zones?
Because you would see, the last one I stayed, there was an 18-wheeler. And people who have campers too, you know, larger, you know, motorhomes, things of that, they might not want to, you know, stay on the road that night, or they might not want to, you know, sleep in their motorhome. So they'll, you know, there's always plenty of room, you know, where these hotels are located. So it's not bothering anyone, you know, like a residential district. And to go forward, I know that a lot of people, Cobbs Corner, there was a shell there originally at 140 Sharon Street. Planning Board approved a project for a gasoline facility and a convenience store. And the name of that convenience store is Seasons Corner Market. And that business came out of Rhode Island, and they presented some beautiful schematics of the inside of the store and how they really pride themselves on servicing the public and just what they're selling. And that is moving forward, you know, very quickly. And that will no longer have the car wash. So it would basically be that nice convenience store and gasoline. And that, that's a good spot for it, at that intersection of all the routes there. So I think that, that, that will be a really nice, you know, perk for that area.
My understanding is there also going to be a coffee shop, I think, associated with that.
Yes, they're having, I had forgotten about that. They're having, yeah, a coffee area in there for, for the people, you know, which is great because that's, that's busy and there's a lot of businesses there. So I think that, I'm very impressed with that project in the building. And of course, the landscaping, you know?
It's, I'm glad you, that's a good segue because the, I'm going to turn the clocks back to the master plan for a moment. And all our consultants during that process were unanimous in their position that the Town of Stoughton's gateways, that is, the entry points into town, need to be dressed up and much more attractive and welcoming. And the Planning Board has taken that particular initiative to heart. And in, you'll see some examples of that. But since we're talking about the gas station in the process, one of the things that the Planning Board paid particularly close attention to is making sure that that corner, that's some nice green space, but not just green. The Planning Board tries endeavors to get a variety of color year-round on those sites. So you're not just seeing a gray in the middle of winter and you're not just seeing green the rest of the 11 months. In addition to that, to create a better sense of welcome and a sense of wayfinding, the Planning Board has required of those projects that are at the gateways to have a "Welcome to Stoughton" sign. And later on, we're going to show a video that shows one of these signs already up. And it was designed jointly with the applicant. It has the town's color black. Instead of using orange letters, we thought it would show up better at night, to have gold letters. So that sign will be going up on the corner of Bay Road and Route 27, Central Street. And I thought that that was worth mentioning since we were talking about that project.
And I know that people do see those signs. And I think people need to understand that that was part of the, the site plan, the special permit process with the Planning Board. And that the Planning Board worked with the developer for them to put that sign up. And the signs are consistent because, as you said in the film, we'll see that later on. And it's just a nice curb appeal, I think, coming into the town. To move on to 873 and 883 Central Street, and that's Palouleos Landscaping. And we had Mr. Palouleos come in and, you know, he presented a very nice project. We didn't have to worry about the landscaping there. And that's in addition to his business, so his business is very successful. And then to move on to the other area, 138, which is 1776 Washington Street. And that is, that's coming into its own at the moment. And that's a basketball and sports facility. And that, I think, will really add to the attraction of the town because a lot of towns do have like sports arenas and things of that nature. So the Planning Board looked at that project as, you know, a project that would bring people into the town, but project that people would actually shop in the town at the same time. Because if they dropped their kids off just for training purposes, you know, not to watch them play a game, but just for like basketball camp or something like that, they would leave their, their child off and then they could go shopping in the town so that they could be introduced to, whether it be a restaurant downtown, whether they had something to eat or something of that nature. And also, this facility also will have adult leagues. So it's a little mixed use of different things going on there. And we'll watch that as it evolves. And I know that some towns have these facilities and they're very successful. So I think that before, I think, what was it, a car dealership? You'd probably remember that?
Yes. And that's a good example of a planning concept called repurposing a site. That's where, where you have a site that is either an eyesore or inconsistent with the area around it. And right behind it, we've got the Atkins, Atkins Street Housing Developments subdivisions. And so frankly, you've got this noisy, invasive, commercial use. And it's been downsized to a much more quiet facility with, where you don't hear the ratcheting of the air wrenches all day long. And the building itself is much more pleasing to the eye. And there is four times as much landscaping. I don't think there was any landscaping on that site before.
No, I think it was a sea of asphalt because, you know, the use prior to that, you just had hundreds, I mean, that, that site has over 200 parking spaces. So you just had cars after cars. And as you said, the noise, having an auto body shop and the rear, and that noise traveling. And now you have landscaping out there, you have a new building, you don't have an auto body shop in that particular area. And you have something brand-new, something brand-new in the area. And a great repurpose at the same time. And on Washington Street, I think it was, Joe, you remember the rental place, I think, 287 Washington Street, which now will be coming, O'Reilly Auto Parts. Okay? And originally, that was a rental place that's vacant for quite a long time. And they've come in. And what we tried to do is, we don't try to change anybody's trademarks and how they have their signs, but what we try to do is we try to tailor it to our town. They can still have, you know, people will know that it's O'Reilly, but we want it to be sometimes a little, little more fancy or tailoring. And I think that the Planning Board does that. And if you go to other towns, you will see O'Reilly, and it gives you a different feel than what it's going to look like in Stoughton. There's far more landscaping, the lighting is a little differently, and the staging is a little differently of how this, how this building will stand. Because I've been around and looked at other buildings. Ours will be very different from other buildings that have viewed.
This particular project that you're discussing is an example of where the same developer was developing two contiguous sites. And what we did was, because the site was such an eyesore as it existed, that is, the O'Reilly Auto Parts, and since a lot of site work went into the Burger King site across the street, and a lot of time and effort went into traffic mitigation, went into safety issues with crosswalks, that we were able to eliminate a sidewalk on the O'Reilly side of Thomas Ave and replace it with landscaping. Because of the new curb cuts that are handicap compliant, traffic is herded down to the Burger King site and down Thomas Street that way. And so what we get is a safe environment for pedestrians while getting a much more attractive site for all the butters and people traveling by. So you're, you're right in the sense that that particular project is much more aesthetically pleasing than what you'll find in, in some of the other examples in other towns that aren't particularly paying close attention to the surroundings for the building.
I think that you bring up a very good point about safety. And with the Planning Board projects, how we have been able to get some traffic signals, whether it be flashers, to make it safer, and sidewalks, rebuilding sidewalks and crosswalks and being consistent with the town, say, the downtown. And people do, I know I've heard people complain, "Well, you know, it's not a regular traffic law and I don't see the flashes." Well, I think like anything else, it takes a while for people to adjust to what's going on out there and pay attention to that. Just like when you're closing a street down, you know, three weeks in advance, you have to put signs up, this particular street would be closed because people are busy in their lives and they're not particularly paying attention. But I think they're working. And I know, I come through 27 every day and come through the square. And when that flashes, I see that people stop and people understand that now. And I think that that has been a big, big accomplishment of the town to do stuff like that. So we've segued with them and piggybacked on that stuff. And we're able to do it in our projects. And I think we've been very successful. And I do have people coming into the office saying how beautiful some of the businesses are that you wouldn't think would have so much landscaping. And I think I contribute that to the Chairman of the Planning Board. And I contribute that to the entire board and everyone working together as a team. And I think it's a collaborative effort on our part. And there's great things happening out there.
I would agree. My experience as Chair, one of the structures the Planning Board is that it's a five-year term. And what that does is it provides for continuity, it provides for experience and growth in the position. I'm pleased to say that each one of our decisions has something in it that the other ones did not because this is an evolving process. It's like zoning. There's no such thing as a perfect slate of zoning. Otherwise, the towns would just adopt it and go home and, and take time off. So each one of these decisions, we learn from the responses of developers to our meticulous list of landscaping and the landscaping plans, color elevations. So we're not... So we're not surprised by garish-looking buildings. And so we've learned to require more and more disclosure as well as protecting the town with the posting of bonds so that businesses can open. So we're not preventing somebody from their livelihood, but in the same token, preventing them from sidestepping the rules and regulations and our bylaws. And back to the board structure, and yes, it's because you're dealing with infrastructure, you're dealing with historical perspective of what was there and what's around the neighborhoods. Having a board that has years of experience in the town as a resident, as well as, in some cases, some of our members are members of the trades. And so they have, they bring that experience to the table as well.
And I think you brought up something important under the site plan for the Planning Board is, once the Planning Board has approved it, decision is written, filed with the town clerk, that doesn't stop the project. Our projects continue to go on because there are site plan inspections. Okay? Just because it's approved, it's not over. So that has to be, you know, the Planning Board goes out and looks at it, the engineers are inspecting, we're making sure that everything is according to the plan, you know, whether it be number of trees, number of plants, number of bushes, whatever. And I know that, you know, people don't realize that that's a big part of it. I mean, you can approve a project, but you have to go out and inspect it, look at it to make sure that project, you know, is a total replica of that plan so that we know that we're getting what we approved. And so a project that is done is not done till everything is in place. And then even like the landscaping, you know, it's a year, you know? We hold in that bond account, you know, a year in case all the trees die so that they can be replaced. So we have that window. And I think that's important because we want it to continue to flourish so that the next year, we can see those flowers and trees. So I think that inspection is key, is critical in this process.
Absolutely. And can't underestimate the amount of time and effort that goes into that. And with some applicants, it's repeated visits. And in fact, the Planning Board recognized that and instituted a new policy with respect to inspections. We've had some people that have abused that privilege. And we now have a system where you get three inspections, three re-inspections after your temporary occupancy. And after that, there is a sliding scale of charges. Because our time, our professional staff was finding it being tied up with projects in partial degrees of completion and not being able to focus on other parts of their job that were in the pipeline. I also want to talk about, you mentioned about the mitigation. And one of the things that does take time, in the case of the mobile gas station, we still have substantial mitigation in the form of intersection improvements at Central and Washington. And again, this is an example of when you have participation by other than the town in the process, we have the engineering staff of District Five. And so they have to approve certain requests that we make of the applicants. And they have their own set of criteria that they use. So all of this engineering process takes time. So you might find a business like Mobil that's opened for more than a year, but yet the mitigation hasn't been fully materialized yet.
Yes. That process, that design process, the applicant in District Five, Mass DOT, they work closely with the applicant. And what happens is, we wait, you know, till they've vetted that process. And then we receive the permit from Mass DOT that they've been permitted. But that process can take a while. And, you know, at the Mobil there, because it's such a complicated intersection, that that's taking a little while. But through the efforts of the Planning Board, Mobil is actually doing this and saving the town of Stoughton a lot of money by putting those changes in there to make it safe. So I think that we have worked, the town has worked very well, the engineering office and the planning office, Town Engineer, Mark Tisdill, and the Assistant Craig Horstfall, and, you know, the associate, you know, Mike Nolan, to really move these projects forward. And that's an important one. And sometimes what happens is, we're able to get the benefit of maybe extending a sidewalk because we're able to work with them.
One of the things I want to go to discuss was you, and pick up on what you said earlier about amenities that the town receives as a process. You were talking about some safety amenities. And I want to mention the crosswalk signaling at Sonic. The Planning Board was concerned that on weekends, the Stoyak fields were going to, the kids were going to be running across Washington Street. And so we had the applicant put in those electric pedestrian signaling that's the best and most safe units where we expect to have some challenges with young adults and others. But some of these other amenities that haven't required any tax dollars and yet enhance the town's reputation, in some cases even its cachet. And that is, you've mentioned several occasions, and I have too, the landscaping. So several of these areas, such as the projects on Washington Street, have been landscaped that the builders request. And so therefore, we have beautified the town at no cost to the taxpayers.
Absolutely.
And later on, we'll see in our video, the electric charging stations that add an amenity to the town that has cost the town nothing. And yet it has all kinds of benefits to the town, not only for the residents, but to attract younger millennials that look for these type of things in terms of selecting areas for where they're going to be residing. And if you would briefly mention the next two projects, and then I want to have time to show the video.
You want to show the video now and I can come back to this?
Let's do that. Now I'm going to ask the, our producers to show a video that was taken with myself and Jeff Pickett onsite at various locations. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to the production staff to start the video of some of our more recent projects and some of the features.
Today, we're taking our camera crew out to look at sites and some of the projects that we've been working on the past year and some of the unique features of those projects. This morning, we started out at the YMCA that just completed a major renovation. And as part of the renovation, the Planning Board required that there be installed an electric charging station. Users of the Y tend to be here for a while, so charging cars is of use to that particular group. And the origin of this particular request comes out of the stretch code, which is the Heightened Energy Code that the town of Stoughton approved at town meeting several years ago. And the Planning Board decided to do its fair share in terms of promoting energy conservation in the town of Stoughton, as well as to send a message to other residents in other towns that this town is an energy green community. And so this morning, I'm here next to the charging station at the YMCA in Stoughton on Central Street. And I'm going to demonstrate how this works. There are two charging units on this particular unit. And individual who wants to like to charge the vehicle takes the cord off the handle and walks over to their vehicle, activates the door that opens up the electric port. The unit is plugged into the car. Then the vehicle charges. In two hours, the vehicle will charge completely. The YMCA has graciously provided this feature at no cost to its patrons. However, some of the charging stations, we will see, will charge a small fee. For example, a complete charge in three hours would cost anywhere from a dollar to $2.50, a lot less than a full tank of gas. And for this particular vehicle, it would go about 100 miles on a full charge. Another interesting fact for those listeners out there is that most people are familiar with the Tesla, which requires you to have a fairly hefty pocketbook. But there are a number of cars in the market that employ the electric technology that are well affordable, such as this vehicle, which is a Nissan Leaf. It happens to be one of the more popular and least expensive electric vehicles, or EVs as they're called. And they're very easy to operate, very low maintenance. And for those people that contain their driving within the 100-mile radius, it serves them well. We're on site at the new Sonic in Stoughton. This project shows some of the design features that the Planning Board has requested of our newer projects. Behind me is some of the extensive landscaping that we've required for large commercial projects such as this one, especially the chains that tend not to be as focused on aesthetics as they are about the efficiency of the site. But this is an excellent example of a well landscaped site. It also shows the vertical granite curbing, which is, I'm standing in front of, which will probably be around longer than I will. It doesn't crumble like concrete curbing. It doesn't get damaged by plows. It keeps its nice, fresh, clean look. Behind me, we're going to move to the electric charging station that the Sonic management provided the town with on a spot that's equally accessible by the Plaza patrons as well as the Sonic patrons. At our last location, I failed to mention that the government gives you incentives for electric vehicles. The federal government gives a $7,500 stipend for the purchase or lease of a federal vehicle, for an electric vehicle. And the state government has established a fund until it dries up for $2,500. So a total of $10,000 is available for sale or for lease on an electric vehicle. And so now I'm going to demonstrate how this new charging station operates with respect of our sample electric vehicle. This particular charging station operates with a smart card linked to your debit card. And you hold it up against the charge point machine. And I just got the approval. And you remove it from the socket and walk over to the vehicle, open the port. And again, insert the plug. Another reason why the Planning Board has requested this in addition to the stretch code is, has to do with economic development. The individuals that have these cars have the capacity to call on their screen where the charging stations are located. And one of the purposes for doing this is to draw attention to the fact that Stoughton has so many of them so that we can attract some new residents to Stoughton who think that the town is, quote, hip and with it as far as being energy conscious and reducing the carbon footprint and will consider Stoughton and their housing and residential needs. And that's our hope for the kind of publicity that you get when you install one of these charging stations in your town. You get it placed on a map that all electric vehicle drivers consult when they're looking to charge their vehicles. We are on location this time at the New Hampton Inn, which was recently approved and is almost ready to open. I'm standing next to another electric charging station that the hotel has installed with two charging options. And this particular one features the charge point, similar to the Sonic location where there's a smart card linked to your debit card. And there is a small fee for the use of this machine in charging your electric vehicle. But this property is also, is a good example of some of the extensive landscaping. It has one of the most extensive planting, number of planting beds of any of the locations that we have seen this morning on our tour of Stoughton projects of the Planning Board. In designing the landscaping for this project, the Planning Board took particular interest in the fact that this happens to be one of the least attractive streets in Stoughton because of all of the heavy industrial use that appears on the street. Lots of truck, tractor trailer traffic, construction yards. And so we paid particularly close attention to detail on the site as a gateway to the street. I'm standing in front of seasonal plantings that we require throughout the year. So you'll see a different annual flower here in the summer. Right now, we're in the fall and you're seeing colorful mums. We're at our last location of the day. This is the Cumberland Farms that recently opened at the intersection of Route 24 and 139, which is a gateway to our town. And because it was, is rather, the master plan requires that all of our gateways to the community be dressed up in particular to create a good favorable first impression of people entering our town and to make residents feel pride, a sense of pride in their community with a good impression driving in every day. The master plan was the project of the Planning Board. It was a three-year project, perhaps one of the most transparent, open, and inclusive planning processes the town has ever undergone. And this project epitomizes several of those points. The Planning Board is always concerned about public safety. And I'm standing between two bollards, which are not only decorative, but serve to keep patrons inside the store safe as well as prevent further injury and damage to vehicles by a driver that accidentally puts the car in drive instead of reverse. And now I'm going to move to another one of our features, which you'll find unique to the town of Stoughton, and that's our dumpster enclosures. And we require the PVC, white PVC enclosure because it looks clean as a result of its color. The applicant has to keep the dumpster area clean and so it doesn't become unsightly and a tawdry part of the site. And this is where, it's a bright sunny day, and you can see how it reflects on the sunlight and it makes the site look much brighter. This is another one of the features that the Planning Board required as part of the site plan approval for this project. It wanted a nice eating area that was safe and protected from the cars, as well as protected from the sun. And the colorful umbrellas provide a nice architectural detail along with the aluminum black powder coated fence, which adds to the aesthetics of the site. I'm standing behind one of the signs. I'm standing behind one of the signs that the planning board has recorded in recent projects. This was designed collaboratively with the applicant. It features gold lettering on a black background. We thought this looked nice. It incorporated at least one of the town's colors, black, and it's clearly at a gateway where the cars coming into Stoughton know that they have changed towns from Randolph and Brockton and other places to Stoughton. And behind me is a fully landscaped island with flowers. Most of these are roses, and we'll have flowers, along with some mums, that are seasonal to dress up, again, our gateway to Stoughton. We hope that you've enjoyed seeing a little bit of the efforts in trying to make Stoughton a better community for all of us.
I hope you enjoyed the video segment of our program today. Gives you a chance to go on location and see some of the concepts, as well as the ideas and the manifestation of the, some of the things we've talked about today in concrete examples. And now I'd like to have a word with our public service announcements.
Hi, it's Gary LaPierre, and the crew wants to thank M-M-M-Maxi's Delicatessen. That's at 117 Sharon Street in Stoughton. They're 781-341-1662. American Cancer Society, yes, they're looking for volunteers, drive cancer patients to and from their treatments. Or just go to www.cancer.org. Ilse Mark's Food Pantry in St. Anthony's Free Market, 2 Park Avenue in Stoughton. For more information, call Christine Gallagher. That's at 781-341-0611, or 781-341-0549. Meals on Wheels, just ask for Jessica. You'll find her at 781-344-8882, extension 2. Stoughton Penny Saver, our business is advertising your business, they tell us. 27 Rose Glen Street, Stoughton, 781-344-4833. Community Forum Showtimes in Stoughton, it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at 6:00 PM. Monday at 8:00 PM, Tuesday at 5:00 PM. It's on Comcast Channel 9 and Verizon Channel 28. All comments and suggestions welcome. Contact us at communityforum1@yahoo.com. Samaritans, they're at 41 West Street on the fourth floor in Boston, 02111. Their phone number is 617-536-2460. 24-hour helplines for Samaritans, and the number is 877-870-HOPE. That's 877-870-4673. Samaritines, you can find them at 800-252-TEEN. That's 252-8336. Or find them online at samaritanshope.org.
And now for some additional public service announcements. Hometown Businesses, we have a hometown business show. It airs Tuesday at 11:00 AM, and also Wednesday at 5:30 PM. You can also see it Thursdays at 8:00 PM and Sundays at 7:00 PM, always on Comcast 9 and Verizon Channel 28. One of the newest shows on Smack is We Are United for a Healthy Stoughton. That show can be seen Mondays at 5:00 PM, Tuesdays at 9:00 AM, Wednesdays at 8:30 PM, and Fridays at 11:00 AM, on Comcast Channel 9 and Verizon Channel 28. Monday Night Bingo, at the Avatora Congregation Temple, 1179 Central Street, Stoughton. The doors open up at 4:30 PM. Games start at 6:30 PM. Get Fresh, Stoughton's Own Cooking Show. New episodes are coming soon. View this on Comcast Channel 9 and Verizon Channel 28, to be seen Monday at 5:30 PM and Wednesday at 8:00 PM. Thursday at 9:00 AM and Friday at 5:00 PM. Welcome back. We're going to spend a couple minutes wrapping up. Norrie, you want to talk about briefly the last two projects, and then we're going to talk about the square for about a minute?
Yes. One of the projects is Panera Bread on Park Street, and as people will notice, within the next three months, the Panera project will have a drive-through. So that will be something new in R.K. Plaza. And the last project is Monk and Porter Street, and that is a project that consists of 15 apartment units, and that will be probably coming under construction, probably I'd say, next spring. They'll be doing some prep work now, but that will come to fruition around that time.
I know that your office, and well as myself, and going about town, get questions often from residents about the building in the square, the so-called Malcolm Parsons Project. And I guess what I'd like to say, and then I'm going to let you chime in quickly, because I think that will be the lead topic in our next show, on the planning board process in the town of Stoughton, update to the residents. I just want to remind the public that large projects, this one is as large to Stoughton as the Filene's Building in Boston, the Devonshire Street parking garage project that finally went through with $155 million worth of mitigation, and the waterfront, Anthony's Pier 4 area, those projects took anywhere from 20 to 30 years in development. They were as significant to those respective neighborhoods, I believe, as the Malcolm Parsons Project will be in the square.
Yes. And I think that you're going to see our project happening in the downtown, within the next year, within the next six to nine months. They're in the process of resolving issues in the parking. Most of their parking is underneath the building, but they are resolving the additional four space parking that's required. And I think that once that building gets up and going, we'll see some of our vacancies filled, because now we'll have people and more activity in the downtown.
And I think that that will be the segue to our next program, so stay tuned for another episode in the planning board process and projects in the town of Stoughton. I'd like to thank you for watching this show on Community Forum. We hope to see you soon.